Okay, good evening. It is seven oh two. September the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This open meeting of the Act and Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with legislative acts of two thousand twenty-two. Chapter twenty, section twenty, an act related to existing extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is convening by video conference, and I should add this is joint meeting with the Maynard Planning Board. Via the Zoom app and as posted on the meeting agenda, please see the meeting agenda on the Acton Town website for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting may be recorded and it may be published or rebroadcast. All participation with this meeting will be visible to others. Each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted via roll call of the Act and Planning Board. I don't believe we're going to be doing any voting tonight. John, will you please call the roll for the Acton Board?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Sam?
Present.
Nice to see you, Sam. Thank you. Nate?
I'm here.
Hi Nate. Michaela, the newest official member. I'm not sure I heard myself, John Capetta is here and Ray.
Ray is here, present. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Bob, do you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Thanks, Bill. So here for the Maynard Planning Board, Annette Darbeyman.
Here.
Natalie Roberts.
She's running late.
Okay, Jim Coleman.
Jim Coleman, you're muted, so we didn't hear your voice.
I can read lips.
There we go, how's that?
There he is. Now we go.
Okay.
Bill Crenshaw.
Howdy.
And Chris Austin is not here yet, he is running late as well. And also with us today from M A P C is Andrea Harris Long. So, welcome Andrea, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
As Ray indicates, this is a joint meeting of the Maynard and Acton Planning Boards to discuss the Powder Mill Road corridor zoning implementation project. So Bill, at this point, should we turn it over to Andrea?
I think so. I think Andrea, if you want to just go ahead and take it over.
Can y'all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm ready.
How about, would you like me to mute everybody Andrea, just because we're getting some background noise before we start?
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
If I can.
Sorry, Bill, before you do that, could we just introduce the staff that's on the call? You muted yourself.
Oh, sorry, yes, I should have done that, I'm sorry, I'm having a connection problem.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, you go ahead, you go ahead, Julia, I'm having a little problem here.
Okay, hi, hi everyone, my name is Julia Flannery, I'm the Assistant Town Planner for the town of Maynard and also the Conservation Agent. Bill.
Okay, thanks.
Bill, apologies, Julia, welcome.
Thanks, okay, I'm Bill Nemser, Planning Director, back again. Okay, our Acton friends.
Hi, I'm Kayla Sauer, I'm the Assistant Planner for the town of Acton. And here is Kristen Gishard, she is the Acton Planning Director.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
And as I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time out of their schedules to do this, and I'd certainly like to thank our colleagues in Acton for working with us. This is such an exciting project and the opportunity to build on the progress that we've made over the past, really almost over two years now, is so exciting. And I really can't wait to see what the future is going to bring here. And I'm sure Kayla and Kristen have very similar hopes for this. And with having both the boards work together, that's certainly a key to making this a success.
Well said, Bill, and I'm definitely looking forward to hearing what the communities of Acton and Maynard, you know, have to share and to see it move forward. And it'll be a very unique project, I think, working across town boundaries, so I'm very excited.
Great, okay, with that, why don't, I'll try to mute everybody, I think, or actually, Julia, can I ask you to mute everybody? Oh wait, I can do it here, I got it.
Yeah, you just have to make me a co-host.
Okay, all right, and let's see, Julia, make co-host, you're a co-host now. Okay.
Alrighty, I think we're ready to go, I see everyone's been muted, so good evening, everyone, again, I'm Andrea Harris Long, really appreciate you having me here tonight. I also really appreciate the scheduling of the Street Planning Board meeting, I think it's super cool that we could do this together and get both of the boards together. So I look forward to working with you in this project and having the chance to meet you all tonight. So tonight, we have kind of a packed agenda, I'll be talking a little bit, but mostly I do want to hear from you about sort of the next phase of this exciting project that you all have been working on. I'll quickly go over who the project team is, do a quick recap of Phase One, the redevelopment strategy and how that was created with the community. And then we'll get into Phase Two, the project that we're kicking off, and go over sort of what's an overlay zoning district and some of our next steps. So we have a really great project team that's working on this project to continue the work that's already been happening. We have three planners from Acton, you just met two of them, Nora Maisler is the other Acton Planner who's joining us. Bill and Julia from Maynard are participating, and then I'm serving as the Project Manager from M A P C, and I'm a Senior Land Use Planner there. And then we have Emma Bataglia, who's a Senior Housing Planner that will be helping with the zoning district, wants to get into the weeds of things more, and Adi Notcher, who's a Transportation Planner. So we have a really solid planning team to keep moving this project along. So I just wanted to recap, I know you all are probably pretty familiar with Phase One, it just wrapped up not too long ago. But Phase One was creating this redevelopment strategy for the Powder Mill Corridor, this one and a half mile stretch that goes between Maynard and Acton. About a half mile is in Acton and about a mile is in Maynard. This was the subject of a study because, as you all know, as residents there, a lot of things have been happening along the corridor, and it's a really exciting spot. There's a lot of development opportunities and pressure, and so I think the towns wanted to, you know, work with the community to sort of have a more cohesive vision for what this corridor could look like. I love that you both are working together on this, I love seeing multiple municipalities work together in planning projects, and it's a really exciting corridor and a good vision. The other interesting thing about this is that it abuts the Assabett River, and so it's a really great resource that through this Phase One of the project has been really drawn into the project. So what did we do with the redevelopment strategy as part of Phase One? There were really three big components, so there was a market analysis and a zoning analysis to understand the sort of existing conditions, the current situation on the corridor. And then there was some community engagement that was conducted. First, I just wanted to remind folks about what the market analysis told us, whenever we looked at what was going on on the Powder Mill Corridor, we looked at market rates, we looked at vacancy rates. We did find that there was slightly lower retail and industrial market rents, but higher office rents in the area. As far as vacancy rates go, there were higher commercial vacancy rates, but lower industrial vacancy rates. And then there was also a retail opportunity gap analysis done, and that really showed that there's a lot of opportunity for new business growth along the corridor. Another component of the redevelopment strategy was looking at the existing zoning. This was really telling, the zoning in the area, there are actually seven different zoning districts that are in this small one and a half mile area. And that each had kind of different intents and purposes, and that's really has resulted in a lack of sense of place along the corridor. The zoning analysis also found that there weren't a lot of housing types that were allowed in the area, so there wasn't as much housing diversity that could have occurred. Part of this one looked at the parking and other zoning requirements that help shape what the development looks like whenever applicants come in. And it was really clear that most of the development that was occurring there is more auto-oriented, not necessarily making it feel like a place where you want to walk around and bike around. It was much more kind of focused on how you can drive from place to place. And then lastly, through the zoning analysis, there was some inconsistencies in the minimum lot sizes. So as we looked at the parcels, we found that there were some non-conforming parcels that have occurred over time, just as the zoning regulations have changed. The last and maybe most important part was the community engagement, so there were a couple of forums held, a lot of interviews were done with residents and business owners in the corridor. And I just put a few of the themes that came out of Phase One that's really informing the second phase of work, that folks really emphasized that, you know, the Assabett River is right there. People want to have access to it, it's kind of hidden away right now with how the development has occurred currently. A lot of folks noted that there should be some safety improvements along the corridor, it's not the safest to maybe walk along today or ride your bike. So having more crosswalks and sidewalks and bike lanes are really desired. A lot of folks said that they wanted more affordable housing options, that's probably no surprise with housing costs as they are. But people really saw that if we could do some zoning amendments in this area, maybe we could expand some housing choices for folks. And then last, we heard from the business community that there is support for existing businesses, that they want more support, and that they would like to have support for business growth in the area. So that there can be a thriving business community along the Powder Mill Corridor. I do want to note that we've created a webpage for the second phase of work, and we've put all of the Phase One materials on the webpage. It's noted here, if you want to jot that down, we'll also probably share the slides after this, so you can take in all of this after the meeting. But there you can read the full redevelopment strategy and watch forum videos and all of the kind of past Phase One materials if you have any questions. So at the end, whenever the strategy was done, there were four key recommendations that came out of it. The first thing, to create an overlay zoning district to help shape what future development can look like. An overlay zoning district would be something that would kind of go on top of the underlying zoning, and it allows for just more flexibility in a finite area. And we saw that as a really good opportunity to take what community members want to see in the area and translate into the zoning regulations. Also, a recommendation was to improve access to and the water quality of the Assabett River. So thinking about how people can, you know, visit and actually enjoy the Assabett River, but then also as redevelopment occurs, how can we make sure that that's not going to negatively impact the water quality of the river? A third recommendation was to incorporate complete streets features, so that gets the feedback that we heard about, you know, making it safer to walk and bike in the area. And then lastly, the final recommendation was gearing up designing future transportation projects. So whenever roadway improvements are done to Powder Mill Corridor or other sort of improvements, making sure that safety and environmental goals are factored into that design process. And so with that, having the strategy done earlier this year, the towns were very proactive and, you know, excited to get to the implementation, which these planners love to see. Once we get a plan done, it's nice that we can instantly move into implementation, and so both of the towns were, you know, on the ball and got two technical assistance grants. One from M A P C through our Technical Assistance Program, and then a second grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to find essentially the first three recommendations. So drafting what an overlay zoning district bylaw would look like, and then doing some design guidance or design guidelines to really shape how streetscape and river access improvements could be incorporated into development as redevelopment occurs along the corridor and as the zoning district comes together. This is also in addition to already what Acton has underway through their Mass Works Grant, their Complete Streets Program. So it's a really nice tying together of the money that Acton has already secured to start implementing some of those streetscape improvements, but then carry that forward on the Maynard side and have it all be really consistent and cohesive along the corridor. So all of this is to say that this is going to help make Powder Mill Road a more walkable, safe neighborhood where people want to live and visit and work and spend more of their time. So it's really exciting to be able to move right from the planning into the implementation of this project. I wanted to give a quick overview of what the timeline is for this work, so we're kicking things off this fall. We're coming to you tonight to hear your thoughts about the overlay and the potential for the zoning amendments. We'll be having a community forum at the end of this month, and then we'll be doing some focus groups in October to try to get as much community input and continue to hear what folks want to see in zoning as it gets updated. And then we'll come back to you all in November, hopefully we'll be able to do another joint planning board meeting. And at that point, we'll share what we've heard from the public so far, and then some preliminary zoning ideas and work with you to refine those and take them back to the community in December to get some more feedback on potential changes. After the holidays, we'll kind of shift focus and we will be working on what those policies around complete streets and river access can look like. And we'll be doing a few more focus groups to really talk to the advocates on those kind of two different parts, the roadway, streets, active transportation realm, and then also the access to the river. And then after we're done with that, we'll really be working with you to finalize the draft zoning. And so, you know, we'll have all this community input, we'll bring the proposed zoning to you and refine it in hopes that by spring of two thousand twenty-four, you'll have a draft overlay zoning bylaw that both towns can consider at town meeting. I really wanted to focus on two of the early engagement pieces that I mentioned. So as I said, we're doing a community forum at the end of this month, and this is to sort of remind folks who participated in Phase One, what Phase One was all about, the recommendations that were in the final report. And then to hear a little bit more detailed feedback about the different types of development that residents would like to see. Getting that feedback can then help us understand and draft some zoning amendments and start working on the overlay zoning district. And then also start to hear where folks would see the most beneficial streetscape and river access improvements, where those are most needed, so that we can try to prioritize that. And then, like I mentioned, we'll be doing some focus groups in October. We're hoping to do three different ones, one with business owners and residents along Powder Mill Road. One with developers and real estate community to understand sort of the nitty-gritty, how does the, how do the regulations translate to the development and site planning? And then one with winners, seniors, people with lower incomes, people of color, those folks who are traditionally kind of have not been as involved in the planning process, trying to use focus groups as a way to reach those folks and get different perspectives through the process. So that's sort of the big picture of the project, the meat of this is our overlay zoning district, and I just wanted to spend a little time going over what is traditionally included in an overlay zoning district. Some of the ideas and things that came out of Phase One that we are likely to include in an overlay zoning district through this process. And then at the end, we'll open it up for you all to have thoughts and comments and help us to guide the next phase of research. So overlay zoning districts are much like a zoning bylaw, there are usually use regulations where you can really customize the types of uses that are allowed in an area. Often, there are specific housing recommendations and regulations so that you can really guide the type of housing in a specific area. There are parking regulations, often more flexible in an overlay, depending on the intent. And then overlays will have dimensional standards, much like the zoning bylaw would, design guidelines, and then specifically landscaping buffers and screening requirements to help shape the type of development that occurs. So looking at the use regulations, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, this map shows the current zoning map for the study area. And there are seven different zoning districts, that means that there are seven different intents of things that you want to happen in the area. It's kind of a hotchpotch today, with each of these zoning districts, there are very specific uses that are currently allowed, and they may not be the most consistent with the neighboring district. So through this process, we want to take this opportunity to dive into the zoning even further and review what's allowed by right and by special permit. And consider, you know, uses that are appropriate based on the feedback that we've heard so far. And then also think about how we can incentivize those pedestrian-oriented uses to make this a more walkable corridor, one that, you know, has more things that people would maybe want to come and visit and walk to and from different businesses. Housing, we're calling this out because housing is obviously a really important topic in both towns. I think it's really important to note that the overlay zoning district provides an opportunity for both towns to implement your recently updated housing production plans. By, you know, expanding the types of housing that you allow through the overlay, you can allow more, you know, multifamily at different scales, mixed-use developments. You can use the inclusionary zoning that you already have and refine that through the overlay zoning district and add even more incentives that can increase the share of deed-restricted affordable housing. And then, you know, just by looking at the housing production overall, that could be afforded through the overlay zoning district, you would be increasing and diversifying those housing options. And that can, you know, expand affordability for everyone, and it'll also benefit the businesses along the corridor because you'll have a bigger customer base that's within the corridor. And lastly, through the overlay zoning district, you can update the zoning to have more certainty in the permitting process and flexibility in site design. So, you know, depending on how you ultimately want to do the overlay zoning district, you can maybe allow more things by right or more things with flexibility, and that could be appealing for housing production. As I mentioned, parking was something that was heavily studied in Phase One and noted as an area that we could continue to refine through this process. So for the overlay zoning district, we can build on the work that I know, Maynard has recently done some parking work, we can continue to build on that and continue to review the parking ratios and the minimums and really hone in on the parking along Powder Mill Road. Also think about how we could be flexible for mixed-use developments while making sure that there's enough parking, but also not too much parking that maybe is going against other goals. One thing that overlay zoning districts often have is more just guidance for how parking is cited on developments, so making sure that parking is either on the side or in the rear of buildings. Just so that, like in this picture on the bottom right, this stilt lay, if you can have a building pushed up close through the road, it just makes it a little bit more walker, walkable and walker-friendly. We want to make sure that we're shaping how development occurs along the corridor. I also wanted to note that because the Assabett River is along the corridor, we will want to limit parking adjacent to the Assabett River, so it gives us an opportunity to be a little innovative with parking along parcels in that area. The overlay zoning district can also require landscaping buffers, especially when adjacent to sidewalks or bike lanes, to just make the area of more unified sort of streetscape. And then because of the proximity to the river, it's really important to make sure that stormwater is managed effectively. And so making sure that parking is incentivized to have green infrastructure and stormwater mitigation, things like permeable pavement, biosil, street canopies. And that's some of the samples on the top here of what that could look like in practice. Dimensional standards is also something that will be included in the overlay zoning district. This map is from the Phase One redevelopment plan, and it shows that there's a quite inconsistent minimum lot sizes in the area. And so that's resulted in, you know, some parcels are non-conforming in their lot size, the lightest shade of pink here shows the ones that are currently non-conforming. So this would be an opportunity in the overlay zoning district to establish some consistency in minimum lot sizes. We could also consider the best build-to-lines to promote the pedestrian-oriented buildings that we'd like to see along here. Consider where building height can maybe be increased in some areas to allow some more flexible type of building and design and multifamily density perhaps. And then also decrease the minimum lot frontage to fifty feet to unlock future development potential. So the dimensional standards are having an opportunity really to make it more consistent across the whole corridor. Design guidelines, this is also something that the overlay zoning district can include. This is really important in areas where there's a lot of redevelopment opportunity, because you can make sure that, especially as developments of a larger scale come in, that they're still consistent with the existing neighborhood scale. So we can think about creative design guidelines, encourage pedestrian-oriented storefronts, and then we'll be incorporating the design guidance to make sure that sidewalks and bike lanes and other complete street features are included to help make the whole corridor a little bit easier to walk along. And then also, as I mentioned, expanding the access to the Assabett River, so making sure that buildings are taking advantage of that instead of hiding that excellent resource. And lastly, landscaping buffers and screening is really a useful tool in overlay zoning districts because, especially in a corridor that has so many different land uses, and you want to encourage that. Landscaping and buffers and screening can really help make sure that neighbors are compatible with one another. You can also screen those less tightly but necessary business uses, like dumpsters and loading areas. You can also require that the landscaping is in native vegetation, and so that could help with especially, you know, having waterfront buffers that are adjacent to the Assabett River. It's making sure that the vegetation is supporting the overall water quality and river quality. And all of these things are also just really nice because it makes for a better walking and biking experience along the corridor. And so I know that was a lot of things that could be included in the overlay zoning district. These, it's kind of, you know, as much or as little as we want to do through this process, but I always like to start with a lot and give the suite of options, and then hear from you all what you would like to see in the overlay zoning district and what you maybe have questions about, that you want us to provide more information in the future. Just now, would love to leave it open for hearing your thoughts about what you see as the future of Powder Mill and how you can see the zoning being updated, so really advance what you and the community would like to see.
Shall we use the use hand feature and then we can unmute as we have a question?
Yeah, and would it be better for me to stop sharing so that everyone can see everyone again?
Probably would. And let's see. Okay. I think I've got, okay, any questions, you raise your hand or use your hand feature and I'll try to unmute you. All right, John, I see John over there, let's see if I can do this. I cannot.
Would you like me to do it?
Julia?
You should be able to mute yourself, I kept that option on, so.
Great. Oh, thank you. Andrea, thank you, thank you, thank you, wonderful presentation. I guess my initial questions would be, it's, I was taking notes. I guess the first one was thoughts about what the latest thoughts, when someone like me hears Assabett River access. It's a river, what does that mean by access? Is it that we are walking by it closer? So that's part one, I'm not quite sure what access means. I would love to hear a little bit more about the non-conforming units, what are they not conforming to? And then I would also love to hear, forgive me if I wrote it down, so. What are the latest ways that people in general in this 21st century say, "I want buffers so that I'm not staring into things that I don't want"? I always get worried about the NIMBY people of the world that say, "Not in my backyard". What's the latest thought about how people say, "I need to be buffered"? So.
Yeah, those are good questions. So I think first regarding access, I think that my take has been mostly that people would love to have, you know, a path or a trail along the river, something where you could walk along. But also, if you're a business and maybe a restaurant, instead of orienting towards Powder Mill, maybe you have a deck on the back that overlooks the river. And then also maybe seeing if there are key parcels that there could be access to, you know, get in and fish or something. I think it could be a lot of things, I think that this is where we need to talk to more people and also better assess the on-the-ground parcels and what's currently used and where there could be key kind of opportunity sites. But I see all of those things as increasing access in different ways.
So access is sort of like enjoying the beauty of the water, not necessarily being in the water.
I think, yeah, I think being able to see it and, I guess, passive and active recreation along it.
Which reminds me of that path of the bike trail by, like, Verso Oil there in Acton, where you can see it and walk by it. You know, and if you want to fish or whatever, or, you know, you're not going to jump in, but maybe you would, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and then your non-conforming question, so it's mostly in the lot size. So normally, non-conforming parcels, you know, they may have been created before a minimum lot size change happened. And so the law is only 10,000 square feet, but now 25,000 square feet is required for a minimum lot size. So they are now legal non-conforming. So that's what sort of all those little pink parcels on the map, that's because they were probably subdivided, and then the zoning laws changed. And now they're non-conforming but still legal because they were done just under a different regulation.
Can I ask a little mini follow-up to that with my bad eyes? How much pink was there? I mean, I saw, I mean, with my laptop, was I seeing a lot of? I mean, with, with my laptop, which I seen a lot of pink or mostly dark red.
Yeah, I think that, um, it was around like 40 or 50 parcels, Bill or Kristen or Kayla, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it was, it was not a huge portion of the study area, but it was enough for the, in phase one, it was sort of called out as part of the recommendations to think about how. More consistent lot sizes across the board would maybe help the overall design.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the last, I'm sorry, I'm being obnoxious. The buffering thing are, are more people saying, I want massive trees. I want 1,800 trees. And if I ever see that place behind me, I'm going to make complaints or are they just saying? I know I want maybe a six foot thing. So I, if I'm walking around my backyard, I'm not going to be staring into people having their dinners all the time behind me.
Yeah, that's a good question. And you know, I have not heard the firsthand like public comments, probably as much as maybe the town colleagues have. I'm not sure what, what people are desiring whenever they maybe are opposed to something that's larger going up next to them. I don't know if one of the town folks wants to answer that.
I'll give it a try. I mean, I, I think in, in, in the first, uh, the first instance I could think of where a buffer would be desirable would be where we're. Trying to encourage, uh, a pedestrian or bicycle traffic adjacent to. Motor vehicle traffic. So that would be an obvious, um, improvement on the area like that where there's a sense of security provided by the, the barrier there. Um, sometimes between uses, um, that may be not necessarily incompatible, but may have features that are not. And they don't contribute to the harmony of the, the, um, entire area. Sometimes there'll be a landscape buffer that, that's very common that we'll use it, um, for something to kind of soften a transition maybe between areas. Um, another time we use a buffer now that we're really trying to do in Maynard is when we have equipment or things like, perfect example is dumpsters. Um, it, it, and you know, we, we, sometimes we call it screening to, you know, we kind of, and we, maybe we use that. Interchangeably a little bit too much, but th- those would be reasons that, uh, uh, I would think would be. Um, uh, reasons we would desire to have a, a, a buffer there. Also, um, if there's any type of, um. Um, natural area. You know, so you have a sort of, a sort of transition, a softer transition, um, in, in the area. So that help you at all? That kind of give you?
It does. I guess, and, and my last comment, and to sort of, then I'll be quiet for a second. Do you get the sense that there's a lot of folks that are attending these events so that we're actually? I, and I know that you can't predict the future, but. This, there's a part of me that gets worried that we do all this work. And then four people show up and then people complain, but they had the chance to show up. And then they don't. Is there a sense of how to make it more like? If you really want to have a part of this, you got, you, you sort of have to show up and be part of it and be active. I always get worried that people complain, but when they have the chance to be there, they're like, oh, I'm too busy tonight. And then they get mad when the results aren't perfect for them. I guess.
Yeah, that can.
Describe their job.
Right. You know, I, i- i- it's like, uh, uh, there's two ways to look at, I suppose, and that we had, I think. Um, and I think M A P C would agree that when we did the first phase, we had, and this was a early co, started during, you know, just the early days of COVID. Uh, we had a really good, robust turnout, more than we would normally have for any of the, um, this type of event in my experience. Does it mean everybody was there? No, it doesn't. And does it mean that at the last minute, somebody's going to say, I never heard about this and, and you're, and it probably will. There's always going to be people that don't like it, right? I mean. But so I look at it like this, something's going to happen one way or the other in the quarter. You could either, we could either help shape it or it's going to just kind of organically evolve and, and, um. But, uh. I'll get back.
And I think, um, you know, the other thing, John, is, um, and Kayla, if you want to jump in a little bit in terms of the outreach and, um. There's going to be a townwide mailing. On this going out soon, ready for the next workshop, so.
Um, it's not going to be townwide, but it's going to go to all the parcel owners, um, and the residents of the Powder Mill corridor. So everyone who lives there and who owns business there will be notified of it. Um, you know, we always try to post things on all our social media channels. Um, we send it out to all the boards and committees. Um, so we're, we're always trying to engage, um, whoever wants to attend. And hopefully we get, um, a lot of people in attendance who, um, are interested and, you know, can help shape Powder Mill.
I think that's a challenge, but thank you. Thank you.
Can I jump in for a sec?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, not so much questions that, as, as a couple of reactions. One, I thought your presentation was excellent. And, and to some degree, John, to address some of the issues. What I see here is basically we're putting together a strategic framework as to how you want to develop that area. And that's really what you're, so to some degree, it's a chicken and egg problem. And we can solicit input, but when people aren't thinking about what it is. Um, I, I think, well, with the access, one example. I found out by accident, you can actually put canoes into the Asa Bet River right near Powder Mill. But you have to find it. Uh, so this has the potential to be transformative in a lot of ways, like the Bruce Freeman rail trail has been and how we're looking at the great road corridor. Um, it gives you options. So that's one. Um, the, the second thing I think is, as far as anticipating is you're absolutely correct. That's an age old problem. You know, you have these forums, people don't show up, then you show up and present and everybody gets upset because someone just likes something they're seeing in it. Okay. So I think that's incumbent upon the, the two boards of saying, the first question I like to a- answer or anticipate is what problem you're trying to solve. What you're really doing here is you're putting a framework as to how you want to see the area developed. That's what this is really saying. So the, I, I bike a lot, so I've been in that area. So making it safer and more accessible, the, the housing. So, and, and I think Andrea, the zoning that was in place, if you go down the, what do you have? You have a lot of car dealerships. You got Active Ford, you got the Subaru that, well, that's with the zoning, if you will, what's been developed there is what zoning kind of incentivized. And with an overlay district, I think we're really attempting, you know, saying, okay, we stepped back. Here's a, 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 a kind of a vision of what this could be like. And an overlay district allows and guides the development. So, you know, 20 years from now, you'll have a very different look and feel. So I think that's kind of my, my, I really like, I think you did a really good job. But I think our job is to anticipate those questions and say, you know, buffering, screening, NIMBY. I, I think the most important thing is to be able to tell people, here is a strategic vision of what this area could be like. There's recreation, there's development, there's housing and the overlay district basically then guys, because, you know. At the end of the day, someone is going to have to put money down to develop something. And, you know, we may not like to hear that, but that's, I, I, I commend you saying, we're looking, want to talk about the real estate and development community. Because none of this is going to happen unless someone comes in and say, I do want to develop. And, and what you do is with, with an overlay, you kind of say, okay, here's the framework of what can or cannot be developed. And it's consistent with kind of broader goals. I, I really didn't have any questions, although I thought, I think you really did a nice job. But I think in terms of the outreach now is that we're going to. It's classic strategic thinking. It's what do we want it to be? We might have, have all the answers. When people come, they're saying, why are we doing this? Well, here's why we're doing this. We don't want arbitrary and random development taking place. We want to facilitate, you know, like the whole thing about safe roads and bikeable and all that kind of stuff is a key part of it. That doesn't happen by accident. That's really, I think that's what I'm saying. I said, this is a very nice framework where you can see that part of town being transformed. It, it's opposed to being kind of a retail strip that you kind of zip through, go to Wendy's or do this or do that. With the Asa Bet River, that can be a really attractive, um, area, I think. Uh, if you have this kind of planning and overlay that you look at and say, here's why we're doing this. Again, I, my, my big thing, what problem you're trying to solve. Yeah. Okay. And here's the framework. Here's why we're talking about this. And you, you have some vision of what it might be. It's, it's kind of where I'm coming from on it. So again, I wanted to think, I thought with the presentation was very well done. Um, at least that's what I, that's what I took away from the presentation is really a, a strategic framework. Um, and so when you begin, the bottom line, John, from my perspective is when you get the town meeting in 2024. Do you have a cogent presentation as to why you're doing this to get town meeting members to vote for it?
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, I might add. Not only the question of what problem are you trying to solve? But also what opportunity you're trying to, 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 to hang on to.
Right.
Exactly. There's an opportunity issue here as well.
Right. I, I think I see those as going hand in hand. You're absolutely right, Sam.
Well, there's two more questions too, Andrea. I, I think, uh, we have, uh, Bill and then Bob.
All right, hi. Um, two quick points. One, just touching on the river access and just. Reminding that there's actually two banks on that river. And, you know, if there's a recreation experience, we can't provide on the Powder Mill side, maybe we can provide it on the other side of the river. Good point. Secondly. Um, I'm curious regarding the, uh, the big apartment project going on the, that the, uh, town line, whether. It's being used as an opportunity to leverage some advancing of some of the ideas, the preliminary ideas, you know, maybe it's. Got some design guideline, um, elements in there. Maybe it has public river access. Maybe it's including some complete streets provisions and accommodations in the roadway. So I'd be curious to find out if that project is going to kind of lead the way.
Sure. Um, I could speak to that if you'd like. Um, so the Board of Appeals approved the project, I want to say. Um, it may have been about two years ago now, um, or maybe a year and a half ago. And the project includes a, a river walk so along the back of that property there. Um, it also included, um, a memorandum of, uh, understanding or, um, and sorry memorandum, yeah. Um, there's an MOU, I believe, between the town that's referenced in the decision as well. Um, with the developer, um, and the developer has some obligations to do some upgrades for sewer. Um, which would help to accommodate the development, but also to help with the existing system down there. So, um, there was some provisions in there that, um, will, I think dovetail nicely into this particular, you know, planning study as well.
Bob, do you have a question?
Thanks, Phil. Um, yeah, I. Um, first, thanks for the presentation, Andrea. That was really great. It really does help refresh everybody's recollection about what we talked about earlier. Um, one of, one of the things that I have, I haven't been able to get my, my head around yet is why? Why are we doing an overlay district as opposed to rezoning the area? And the reason I ask that is because my understanding is that if it's an overlay district, somebody can opt out. And just go with what the existing zoning provides. So should we be having as part of this a discussion about which option we choose? Or is it just a clear advantage that you want to do the overlay district?
I can speak to sort of historically why folks choose to do overlay versus doing an underlying zoning change. And then maybe Bill or Kayla or Kristen can provide some local context as to why you're choosing this tool. But oftentimes an overlay, um, will be used because it might be in an area where not everyone is comfortable with having a big rezoning of their property. But you want to still allow some flexibility for the zoning. So what an overlay does is say, okay, if you are ready to redevelop your property. The town has this overlay that is just like, Ray, I think, put perfectly. It's the vision for what we want to have happen. So you can do this kind of extra sort of redeveloping, um, and have flexibility with how you do that, that you couldn't do with the just underlying zoning. But if you don't want to develop your property and maybe just want to put a shed on the back of your property. You don't need all that flexibility of an overlay zoning district to do that. You can still do that through the underlying zoning district. Um, so that's sort of how other communities have used overlays to give more flexibility for those property owners and developers are, who are ready to do a development and do something different on their property that they couldn't do with underlying zoning. But it still gives some, I think, confidence for the property owners who just want things to stay as is, and they don't want to really do anything with their property. But I would love for Bill or Kristen or Kayla to speak to why the towns chose this opportunity.
You want, Kristen, you want to go?
Yeah, I think that was really well put, um, Andrea. And I, I think the other piece is that it, I think that the overlay district, um, at least as the vision kind of, um, evolved from the community input. Um, would really be an incentive for a developer. So, um, it kind of gives somebody, uh, kind of like you were talking about with the vision. It gives somebody, um, kind of a little push to kind of really do what the communities want. Um, so it's, yeah, you, you, you put it well.
I would also add that because both of the communities are doing it, I think it's easier for you to come to an agreement on a overlay zoning district than to try to. Do a zoning district and make it work with Maynard's and then do a zoning and make it work with Acton's. I think that it will be better positioned to have consistent zoning if we do the overlay zoning district approach.
Typically, yeah, typically, uh, I mean, everybody summed that up pretty well. I, it, it's, it's also when you're trying to do kind of a surgical. Um. Surgical approach to an area often too, because there's, in this case, you know, it, it's not going to be appropriate for all the areas around there. And, um, and, but I think the biggest thing is that you don't want it during redevelopment, you wouldn't want it to go backwards and revert. To what the previous zoning was because, you know, you'd want to encourage consistent zoning. So it stays in, uh, harmony with it. That would be my.
And I'll just add one more thing. We can write the overlay zoning district so that, um, your comment about opting out. I'm thinking of what someone else said about the car, auto dealerships in this area through the overlay zoning district. You could prohibit new auto dealerships. So that would prevent someone from coming in. If that's something that's not in the vision for this area, you don't need any more auto dealerships in the corridor. Then through an overlay, you could have a special list of prohibited uses of things that aren't really consistent with their overall vision. So that would be one way of sort of getting out of just, you're either in or you're out.
Thank you.
I also see our, our chair has arrived, Chris. Uh. I didn't know if you, um, had anything you want to add. Bob was bananaing everything explicitly, but I know you're interested in this.
Uh, I think this team's doing great and I just wanted to keep continuing and I want, uh, I want to keep the momentum. So I'm really happy to see, uh, uh, what I would call from at least a planning and, uh, community engagement perspective, an aggressive sort of schedule. So thank you, Andrea and others that have figured out this, uh, the schedule coming up. Uh, I am, I do share some concerns, um, about community engagement. It's always a challenge. I think I want to, from my perspective, I'm going to do what I can to, uh, increase community engagement on this as best I can. Uh, one thing that I'm struggling with as I've been thinking while I've been hearing the presentation and the questions is that. I'm trying to connect. What the challenges are specifically from my point of view for the town of Maynard. And I'm, I know Acton has their own challenges too. We all have our challenges. And what the goals of this overlay district is. So what's the connection between those? I'm, I'm not asking for an answer. I think there's no answer right now, but. As we move towards public engagement, it's going to be very helpful for us to connect the dots for everyone and say. Here are the larger challenges we're having. Here are the opportunities and here's why we want to do this. So there's, I'm still grab, uh, grasp grappling with what the why. Is in a sense like I, I, it feels right and I, and it feels good that we're heading down this path. But making all those connections, I think is going to be imperative for, for, for communication and success. Does that make sense, Andrea, from your perspective?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And I think, um, you all are really helping me shape the why. And this is really helpful for thinking about how we do frame the forum conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. If I can add, Chris, I couldn't agree with you more. That's why I think what we're really saying is, I, I'm going to come back. We're, we're coming up with a strategic framework for that particular area. And because they're contiguous and acting just doing it by itself, Maynard is doing it by itself, you're going to have a disjointed approach to what gets developed there. So I think that's, that's, you're kind of stating it, you're stating the same issue. What problem are you trying to solve?
Well, I think what you said just there, Ray, is that there's definitely an opportunity here, right? Well, I think what you said just there, Ray, is that there's definitely an opportunity here, right?
Yeah.
Definitely an opportunity for collaboration, coordination, and we're doing it. And that's a good job for everyone doing it. I, I'm, I, as we go down this path, I want to do our best to try to connect this to current and future challenges. So, so that it's easily understood why this is an important effort for everyone.
Right.
That's all I have, Bill. Thanks for the opportunity.
Andrea, for. Okay, um, the. Presentation, what we, are we going to go ahead and put that on the website too? So people that, if people want to review it. And we'll put the, the video of this, I'll send it to. Everybody who wants it and we'll put, we can post it up there as well. We post all our stuff, our videos on YouTube, so I'll make sure everybody has the link to get to it.
That sounds great.
Can I ask a process question? So is, is this, is this agenda item done with? Because I know you have other items on your agenda.
Actually, one more slide that I can share, just to kind of go over next steps. And I think that you all teed up the converse, conversation perfectly. But. I think that I just wanted to put a plug in that we are doing a community forum September 28th. And so I think like Kayla mentioned, we are trying to reach as many people as we can. And we have a pretty big contact list from phase one, so we'll be making sure to reach out to all of the people who participated in the forums before. Everyone who we interviewed and spoke with one-on-one. But the more that you all can help us push off the flyer and the information about the forum, the better. And then we'll be doing the focus groups. If you have specific, either community-based groups or individuals that you think would be really good to have in those focus groups. Please feel free to email them to me or your staff. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be coming back to do another joint planning board meeting, hopefully in November. Where we can share the feedback that we've heard to help shape sort of the why and the purpose of this. And then start talking a little bit more about the proposed zoning ideas and brainstorming with you all, how regulations can be added into the overlay. So I just wanted to put a plug in, please help us spread the word.
I will, I will, I was purposely not. Advertising for the, the forum yet, and as of tomorrow. I'll get it out there and ask everybody to share it.
Sounds great. I think, Sam, you may have a question.
Can I say something, Andrea?
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, very impressive. I'm, I'm impressed with the depth of, I went through the whole document that was sent up. Also, as an ex-decky, I'm very excited about this whole area. I mean, I moved to this area in 78 and I, you know, found and went to those buildings. So I'm, I feel very connected to that area. So I'm very happy that something like this is being proposed. My only, not concerned, but my sort of observation is that while you're trying to. Make this thing very pedestrian friendly, don't forget that Route 62 is a, is a fairly well-traveled road. So, so there'll be fair amount of traffic. So you, you want to balance the two things, make it safe for the pedestrians, but also not impede. The, the, the folks that are in their cars traveling. And, and just make sure that, I mean, for example, I don't know if others would agree with me or not, but in West Acton. We've done something on a very small scale, but very similar. And there are a few faults that I, I can point out. And I think it would be wise to, to come and take a look or talk to the people who designed that to, to get some, you know, ideas of do's and don'ts. The only other comment I have is, one of the things you said in the community forums, you had a whole bunch of people, you know, the business people. And then you had people of color and lone people should have wider community input as well. I mean, it's good to, to, to take the needs of, you know, some of those people because they tend to be a little different. But I think you need to talk to a wider set of people that live in that area to get their input. Otherwise, fantastic, very good, very good in-depth analysis. I was quite impressed.
Sam, I agree wholeheartedly with that last point. It's community outreach is going to be imperative. But also I want you to know that the town of Maynard has been planning to, to detour all traffic. And we're going to route them back up 27, back up through Acton, and we're not going to allow cars on Powder Mill anymore. So I plan, okay, just, I'm just giving you a heads up now.
Chris, Chris, your, your humor is appreciated.
Yeah.
I, I was going to say.
Back down Concord Road, it'll be fine.
I, I was going to say that, go talk to the, the folks on Route 27 as well.
All right, well, if that's everything, I'll, if. Mr. Chair from Acton, if you wanted to adjourn your meeting and then if you're done, I can stop the recording temporarily. And then Mr. Chair for Maynard, I can start it again for our meeting if you'd like.
From, from the Acton side, I need a motion from one of our board, one of our board members. Don't all jump up at once.
We adjourn our meeting for Acton Planning.
Thank you, Michaela. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. John, will you call the role on Michaela's motion, please?
John, you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry. Nate. On the motion of.
To adjourn the Acton Planning Board meeting.
Yes, Nate.
I think Nate is muted.
I'll come back in a second. Michaela.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Myself, John Capetta says aye. Ray?
Aye.
And I'll try once more, Nate.
We, we, we have four voting for adjournments. We have four meetings adjourned.
Thank you.